...five meeting of the Forest Park Planning Commission to order. The Planning Commission serve as a recommending, recommending body for mayor and city council.
He not talking, that's talking. Echo.
Do I continue? Okay. The Planning Commission serve as a recommending body for the mayor and city council. The Planning Commission share recommended approval, approval with condition or denial of application being forward to the mayor and city council. All person who wish to address the Planning Commission shall sign up on a form to be provided by the Planning Secretary prior to the commencement of this hearing. Each speaker shall speak only to the merits of the proposed petition under consideration and shall address his remarks only to the members of the Planning Commission. The applicant as well as the proponents for, for or against the petition shall have ten minutes to speak during the public hearing portion of this meeting. Prior to speaking, the speaker will identify him or herself and state his or her name and current address. Only person who are signed up may speak to the petition being heard. Staff will first present the petition, then I will ask the board member if they have any questions. Then I will open up the meeting for public comments, at which time the applicant will speak first, followed by the additional speakers. Once everybody has spoken, I would then close the public comments for discussion and recommendation by the Planning Commission. Man, we have, what's it, what, seven items that we were, uh, that's on the agenda. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
As far Huck, As far Huck is absent, Michael Klink scales.
Yeah.
Michael Klink scales is present, Roger Jackson. Roger Jackson is absent, Donald Williams.
Present.
Donald Williams is present, Lois Wright.
Present.
Lois Wright is present. Mister Vice Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Motion of adoption of agenda with any addition or deletion. Motion to approve mo, uh, minutes.
I put a motion to approve the minutes.
It's all right. It's been motion and second to approve minutes. All in favor? Oppose? All right, I win, we will move. Any public comments at this time? Okay.
We got some, we got public comments.
We'll, we'll speak, uh, if not, we'll move on.
We have public comments there.
Right for the public.
Do we have?
Anyone from the public?
Both the councilwoman and to speak.
Do you have? Please sign your name. Okay, do we do, we do have public comments? Gordon Gaiselin? You can come. No comments?
No comment? He signed up.
This, this isn't his petition.
Okay. Tiffany McCorr. All right. Okay. Who was that?
She said McDay.
McDay, I'm sorry, Mc, McDay. Uh, name again and address, please.
Good afternoon. I am coming to ask you all some questions about this five-five-six K Street. You, uh, it looks like, well, it says that they're trying to decrease from eighty feet to sixty feet in the width. So I wanted to know, how is that going to affect the property around it? If, if any? And if they do build something there, they tear that house down there and they build a, a home, are they gonna go up or are they gonna go widthwise? For them, they asking for the decrease.
Okay.
So that was my question. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So that's case.
K Street. Come in.
Regarding your questions, so that information will be answered in the report. Basically, we have lot standards and based off of the age of the lot, it doesn't meet the required lot standards that we are, that is in our zoning ordinance. So in order for the applicant to be able to build on the property, that is the purpose of him requesting a variance due to the hardship of being able to conform to the current lot width that is required. So that just means, um, more or the home will be built on the lot, but instead of it allowing a greater lot depth, it'll be smaller based off the size of the lot, which is their hardship because they can't change that, uh, those property lines to increase the lot depth. So it won't harm the property next door because it's not like it's going to impede on the properties next door. It is just basically within the standards of the surrounding prop, of the property line that is going to affect itself.
But does it stagger into somebody else's property? The property line?
No. No, so it, it, it wouldn't work like that. Yeah, so this is only, and I'll explain more when I, um, get to that case item, um, but it is specifically for that lot within those property dimensions. You're welcome.
All right. Any, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Jack Sims. Okay. Is it Walter?
Walter.
All right, Walter. Would you like to please come up to the phone, please, and, uh, share your name and your address, please?
Okay, my name is Walter Gooden, I say at five-four-three K Street, back call from the house.
Yes, sir.
The five-five-six. And my concern, I was just asking, I mean, I get a lot of people flooding in there day in and day out, week in and week out, cars lining up and down, going through the house, just, you know, going through the house, around the house, just, they close up right in there every week and every, every day. They've been going on for about two or three months. Is the house sold? And is it auctioned off or what? You know, that's what, that's what I, I was, uh, concerned about. I was just wondering about, is it sold? Is that property sold? So people's, I guess not. I thought they were auctioning the house off maybe. It was auctioned off at one time, but, uh, it was either or not because people still flooding in there every day and every week, you know? There'd be about five or six car lining up right on K Street. They'd be going all, all around the house, looking through it and everything. You know, they even left the door open on the house. That's, that's what I was wondering about. You know, is it still open, uh, open for sale?
Okay.
Somebody must own it because they asking for variance. Does someone own the property?
We're gonna allow the cities.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, to my knowledge, someone does own the property, that is the reason for the requested variance.
All right. Any, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Callan McMillan. Come to the, no.
You have comments?
Yes, ma'am. Address your name again and then your address, please.
Callan McMillan at ten-twenty Ferguson Court. Would like to know, it's so narrow where, uh, they talking about putting this duplex, two-family duplex. It's real narrow in that area and, um, I just wanted to know when, uh, whether or not they gonna actually, uh, start, you know, like, it's trees in that area and, um, when do they supposed to start construction of, you know, like, removing the tree? And, um...
Excuse me, Ms. Callan, can you address the, uh, the address that you're talking about?
Ten-twenty Ferguson Court. And I just wanna know when do they supposed to start all this construction? I see so close to the resident where I live.
Yes, ma'am. I see the address.
Very close. I can't see how they can put a two-family, uh, duplex right there. I can't see it.
Good evening. What I wanted to mention is while the, after the planner does her initial presentation of the actual petition, the public will have their opportunity to speak. At this time, it probably would be best to allow the planner to provide all the pertinent information prior to asking any additional questions. So if you don't mind, just let Ms. Kumasa prevent, present her petition and then after, you're welcome to ask as many questions as you would like. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm thinking that's for everybody here, so we bout ready to, to get started. Again, you can come after, uh, city presence and you can ask questions that you want to ask. Just make sure you state your name and address, all right? Okay, so we have no old business, so it's seem like we ready to get started, amen. We turn it over to you for new business.
Good evening, Vice Chairman and Board, how are y'all today? This is case number CUP two-zero-two-five dash zero-two. Current zoning is the downtown Main Street District. The proposed request is the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to authorize the construction of additional forty-eight units, bringing the total number of units to sixty as part of proposed mixed-use development within the downtown Main Street District, Ward Two. Staff recommendation is, uh, approval, I mean, yeah, approval of conditional use with conditions, so long as approved. Owner of record is to, to J.J. Investments LLC and the Downtown Development Authority of Forest Park. The addresses are zero-seven-five-two-seven-six-zero and seven-seven-zero Main Street. The applicant is Presswick Land Holdings, uh, and the parcel identification numbers are one-three-zero-five-zero-B-K-zero-zero-six, one-three-zero-five-zero-B-K-zero-zero-five, and one-three-zero-five-zero-B-K-zero-zero-two. The current acreage is one-point-six-two plus or minus acres and the future land use is institutional mixed-use commercial. Summary background, the applicant at zero-seven-five-two-seven-six-zero and seven-seven Main Street is requesting a conditional use permit to authorize the construction of a sixty-unit mixed-use development on a one-point-six-two plus or minus acre parcel located in our traditional downtown core within the downtown Main Street District. The proposed development falls within the residential, residential density guidelines outlined in section eight-dash-eight-five-four-eight-A-two of the zoning ordinance, which stipulates that residential densities within the district must range from six to twelve units per acre. However, the proposed density exceeds the maximum limit of twelve units per acre, uh, necessitating the approval of a conditional use permit, uh, process as specified in section eight-dash-eight-one-eight-eight of the ordinance. The contiguous zoning with the surrounding areas, north is RT, which is two-family residential district, um, east, west, and south is all downtown Main Street District. I'm on page two, well, seven, I have provided you all with the aerial map showing the proposed location in question as well as the zoning map, um, so that you're able to see the surrounding zoning of the area. Um, I have also provided you with a site survey that details the current state of the land, um, or the property in question, as well as on page ten is the site plan of the proposed development. And we also have included a site rendering of what is proposed to go at this location, uh, and also the current state and site photos. There is a number of criteria and questions regarding, um, what the amendment would be consistent of if it's compatible with the city land use. Staff has reviewed the criteria and at this time, based off of, um, section eight-dash-eight-five-four of the ordinance, um, our recommendation is based on the residential density within the zoning district must range, uh, between six to twelve units per acre. However, residential densities exceeding twelve units per acre are subject to approval through a conditional use permit as stated. The proposed development within a total of sixty residential units would exceed the maximum residential density allowed by right, uh, within this district and it is necessitating us to move forward with this conditional use approval process. It is important to take note that while the ordinance establishes the framework for this application, the ultimate decision, uh, regarding the approval of the conditional use permit resides with mayor and council. As they are the final decision makers in this matter, their determination will consider both the requirements outlined in the ordinance and the specific merits of the applicant's request, um, taking into account the potential impact of the additional units on the surrounding community and the overall development within the downtown Main Street District. In conclusion, this, uh, staff acknowledges the applicant's request in alignment with the ordinance and provides this information for mayor and council's consideration and their review for the conditional use permit application. If granted approval, staff does recommend the following. One, if mayor and council approve the development of the sixty units, staff recommends that the applicant preserves the architectural design as presented in the rendered photo provided to staff. That is final for my presentation. I have, am available if you have questions.
Okay. This time we're gonna open the floor to any public comments. The applicant, wanna come and state your name and address?
Good evening. Edric Harris, three-seven-one-five Northside Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia, three-oh-three-two-seven.
Casey Craven, Presswood Development, three-seven-one-five Northside Parkway.
Yes, sir. Okay.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so it was a pleasure and honor to present before you tonight. Of course, we've had several meetings with the economic development team as well as working with the, uh, development authority as we're looking to hopefully expand the vision of, um, what the city hopes to see on Main Street. So what we provided, uh, within our design criteria, you know, we've had several meetings and talked through, you know, really a lot of the design elements to make sure it was fitting within the, the future vision of what the hopes and goals would be for Main Street. Number one goal is looking to bring, you know, kind of activate the street with a kind of a new urban design, of course, something that looks very attractive, um, that brings in some additional retail, you know, get some of the pedestrian activity going as well as bringing some additional residences. So of course, based on how we've structured everything, we are requesting the sixty units and, you know, ask the, the favor of the, uh, the, the board to, to approve that. And if there's any questions, I reserve my time really for questions.
Okay.
Any questions?
All right. Okay, and do we have anybody that wanna oppose, speak against? Additional questions? Additional question? You gotta come up to the, to podium and state your name and, and address, please.
Good afternoon, I'm City Council's Dolores Gunn for Ward Two. And, um, greetings to everybody, I hope everyone had a productive day. I am against this development. I'm hearing key things. First thing they wanna come in, they want a conditional use permit because evidently somewhere down, somewhere down the road, they didn't do all the math and intake. And so I'm hearing, um, from six to twelve units per acre and they don't even have enough space. So now they have to come back in and, um, really decrease the living space that was originally, um, put in, in, um, place for this project to go forward. My concern is this, Main Street is two, is a two-lane street. The majority of Forest Park, two lanes. You're talking about sixty units. I just sat up here and counted the, the, the parking space itself. That's sixty cars on Main Street. Sixty cars plus additional, um, persons probably coming in and visiting. If, if, if I am a two-car owner, I'm gonna take up those space and try to, we gonna have parking all around the side and in between. Now we have College Street, where high, uh, our middle school is being built. That is a lot of congestion for Forest Park right now. And with me talking to the residents of Ward, Ward Two, I've talked to many of them, we had dialogue, this is not conducive right now. One of the things I hear them saying, we're gonna come in and we're gonna spruce it up and we're gonna make it lively for, um, retail. We got empty buildings on Main Street right now, let's, let's fill that up first before we come in and bring all, all of, um, this in, this influx. Do we need residents to come here? Yes. But what do we have to offer them right now? Because what we have to offer them right, right, right now is nothing on Main Street that's popping. I can go and get me some tools down here. I love that little, that little spot down here, uh, right here by, by the fountain. But outside of, of that, we're gonna come in, we're gonna condense the space that they already came in and, and had, um, presented. We're gonna bring in sixty, um, persons plus additional families and all that congestion is going to take place. I am, um, very much along with Ward Two against this development. Right now, it's, it's not the time. Let's fill Main Street up. We, we talk about Main Street, Main Street's what we hopping, popping, locking and all that, I don't see it, it, it's not moving. I don't see anything on Main Street. But now we wanna, we wanna bring in sixty-plus bodies? Plus additional families, um, um, in, in that one unit? Plus congestion of, um, 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 traffic? Two lanes? All the houses that are, um, back there on Hill Street? All those, those residents are gonna be impacted. I already have a hard time just coming, trying to get to roses, coming off from, um, Park Avenue, trying to get to the light. I can only imagine. So I love the little pictures. Beautiful, they did a great job. But I, right now, for Ward Two, being city council, a voice for that ward, I say no, I don't think this, this is a good idea for, not for us right now. Bring in some retails, bring in some, some, um, 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 viable places we can go and eat right now. Main Street is dead. And don't y'all act like y'all don't know it's not because it is. Let's build that street up. How you gonna, how you gonna draw the rabbit and you ain't even got no carrots to draw them to, to the spot?
Okay.
That don't make no sense. I'm, I'm against it.
Okay.
I'm against it. Ward Two is not for this construction to go forward.
Okay, thank you. Did the applicant wanna speak concerning the, it seemed like it was more about the space and you wanna share concerning that than we?
Madam Councilwoman, I know this is, you know, hopefully after we could have some time to sit down and kind of speak through. So of course, background is city planning. You know, I, I have a degree in city planning and kind of study, you know, evolution of cities, evolution of development, how you make cities tick. So of course, when you want something to be vibrant, you have to have the rooftops. When you want retail, you have to have the people to support it. So again, that's why you see especially on a street such as Main Street, you see a tick up and an increase in density because you have to have the people nearby to support it, especially if it's not at a signal or at a major intersection. So if you want all of Main Street to thrive, where are all the people coming from? Yes, there's lots of people around in the neighborhood, however, you still need more people. And we know typically that, you know, unfortunately, there's an envious, I mean, it's never in my backyard. You want the shiny object, but there are some inconveniences that come with it. Now personally, because, you know, we do, you know, several communities, you know, throughout South, throughout, throughout the southeast, lots around this area, city of Atlanta, and that's our number one complaint, it's like, people are concerned about traffic. Well, if you think about, if you go to a typical neighborhood, there could be sixty homes, which is kind of what we were proposing, sixty homes. You never see sixty cars stacked up coming out of that neighborhood because people work first shift, they work second shift, they work third shift. So again, when we look at how traffic really is generated, you may have three or four cars coming out at the same time, but that's it, seven AM for the person going to the eight AM job. Somebody else is working at night. Someone's inside the community that works from home. So there's a dynamic of how do we create these vibrant communities? So this is a great opportunity. So if we're saying, let's make Main Street vibrant, you've got to start with a catalyst somewhere. I know there's some other great communities that are coming, other developments that are coming, however, here's an opportunity for sixty new residences that are living wage, they're not overly expensive, and you have some retail. So one of the other things that we do, we have retail relationships. If you go and you look at our website, you know, I'd love to have the opportunity to sit down. We have relationships with retailers that come and locate in our facilities because number one, what we try to do, because we know we are one of the catalysts that would come in, we basically do a nominal lease, meaning it's very, 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 very cheap. So we entice that person to come in because guess what? Right now, there's not enough people to support it. So we're helping bring that and would love the opportunity to partner with this community. We have many examples where you can see where this has worked, you can go see them you don't see. Most of our communities are well over sixty. I mean, we actually wanted more than sixty here, but knew we needed to kind of compress it because density was a concern. However, you still need enough to make it work and to make, to support that retail and get the vibrancy going on Main Street. So I would love to have the reconsideration, would love the opportunity to sit down and talk more about it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Please stay calm and state your name and, um, and your address.
Good evening, my name is Anne Keith, I live at forty-eight-seventy-eight Evans Drive, right on the corner of Hill and Evans. And I have lived in Forest Park, I grew up here, lived here most of my life. And I'm for this project. I want something to happen on Main Street. I've been, I think a lot of us, if you've lived here a long time, we have been at this stage for so long, we are ready for this to happen. Sixty units, if it looks like this, four stories, is that four stories? I mean, that's sixty units and four stories and then the parking, I was just concerned about the parking. It is a small space for sixty apartments, but I want something to happen. I wanna walk out of my house and walk around the corner and sit down and have dinners somewhere. And I'm looking forward to having new people into our community that can share the goodness of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, we, uh, our mayor will come and state, we know your name, but you might stay in the address.
Yes, thank you. So good evening, everyone. So I am here to express my support for this project. If you look at our LCI plan, the residents of this community have spoken. They have told us for the last few years what they have wanted to see in the city of Forest Park. And now is the time that is coming to fruition. We have opportunity here unlike any other. And to not welcome it is really disheartening. It's counter to what everyone has said based on the LCI that we have presented for the last maybe five or ten years, um, for this community. And so if you think about any community that is thriving to date, that is because it took planning. And that planning, in addition to that, it took the continuity of leadership and the continuity of like-mindedness to keep that vision at the forefront of anyone who sits on that diet. And so it's also the chicken and the egg. As the gentleman mentioned, um, previously, we want people to come to the city, we need businesses. Well, we need the people here to sustain the businesses. And so you can go back and forth as to what comes first, but when the opportunity is here, it's incumbent upon us to seize that opportunity before it slips away. before it slips away like some of the other projects have. And so we do have life coming to Main Street. But to know that we have the opportunity for rooftops to come along with it, it's a win-win for all of us. So I am in support and I hope you are too.
Thank you, Mayor. Alright. Council, state your name, please, we know you too.
I am Councilwoman Wells with the city of Forest Park, and I represent Ward Four. And I kind of sort of agree with the mayor, I also agree with Councilwoman Gunn. I don't think all of us, like Ms. Keith know, I grew up here, I was raised in Forest Park myself, been here all my life since I was four. Of course, we want to see some things happen in our community, because right now, our community is really dead, you know? And we need some life on Main Street. However, I don't think the project is the problem, I think the size of the project is the problem. And so we don't want to congest our areas. Yes, we need name brand grocery stores, we need eateries, we need to be able to live, work and play in our communities. And right now, we can't do that. So I don't think Councilwoman Gunn's against it, I'm not against it, but I am against changing it from 12 units to 60, like that's excessive. So I just think you all should consider that as well, thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
I'm against this duplex.
Please state your, please state your name and your address again.
My name is Carolyn McMillan, 1020 Ferguson Court, Forest Park. I'm against putting this duplex, because it appears to mean that with all these houses that are going around, it's like.
Ms. Carolyn, we're not talking about that right now. Which, we're here and we're gonna get to it, but we're in case.
Alright.
CUP 2502. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Rochelle Dennis, 745 Forest Parkway. I'm the interim economic development director here in the city of Forest Park. And I encourage you to support the conditional use permit for the Presswick development. Here, as we look at economic development, and really in any city, but particularly in ours, the linchpin of growth, particularly in Forest Park, lies within Main Street. To have, as the mayor spoke, to have restaurants and grocery stores and all of the amenities and things that we work very, very hard to bring to our city every day. Part of the challenge that we have is that we need the density, we need people. And that is the constant narrative that we get. And so, and it's a little bit of that, somebody said chicken and egg, but it is very much the chicken and egg. Somebody has to go first, and I am very thankful for Presswick for coming to the table and working through all of our last minute negotiations and finally walking out with a signed contract just this week with our development authority who is in favor and very enthusiastic in their support. But I encourage you to do the same, to support this project. I understand and I hear the concerns around sizes, et cetera, et cetera. But again, going back to the chicken and egg, until we address and attract and keep people in the downtown footprint, the retail will follow, retail follows people. And so for us to have the retail and to have that live, work, amenity, play amenity that we want throughout our city, but particularly here in the Main Street district, we have to have the people. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Dr. Lawanda Valami, 1080 Lower Drive, Forest Park, Georgia. I can actually see this project becoming a new thrive for Main Street. My concern would be what is the conditional use that the investor is looking to have? And how would that help improve Main Street? I can attest that I have seen development in Haightville start out just as this. But to leave from a first request asking for six or 12 units and expand it to 60, my question would be, why when you came to the table, you didn't come directly with that 60 number? And I would like to know, what is the special condition for this housing project to be developed? And also, I heard about the chicken, I heard about the egg. But nevertheless, we have to be considerate, we are in a population, some people say 19, I say 21. And we do need sustainable housing, we need affordable housing. But we need to make sure these contracts are locked in, that when these resident tenants future come to purchase or rent out the place, they are not dealing with hyped up renter situation, getting it something that they can't afford. They, a renting apartment, but they are almost paying for housing to purchase. I would like to be more transparent within, how does the city be looking forward with no development throughout Forest Park? No more than over at the Army Base, a minute of people doesn't get out there much. So what is we are planning to do when we build these houses on Main Street? What we gonna offer them? Top of my head, the library, that's quiet, nobody want to go in there. Unless they're reading. The park, nobody want to go there because it's too loud, you got children. So what are we offering the future tenants to come and reside on Main Street? Will we get a building over there and get no tenants in it, and then we just got a building, beautiful building? Let's think out of the box, what if? And the last but not least, why Main Street? We have a two lane right here on Forest Parkway, right across the street, it's a vacant lot. Why can't we develop Main, I mean Forest Parkway, where the bypass on this car car, where all the traffic is flowing? Why we get inside Main Street where there's nothing? It just don't make sense to have development going where there is nothing and nothing is there when they get there. I think it would have been more wiser to be right across the street. All that land over there belonged to the city. And there are sound barriers you can put up for the train. And as far as I can see now, North Port is, in South Port, it's moving fairly to get to Savannah for the pole. Why can't we revisit this? I know you said someone signed a contract, but what about the citizen who's against it? Will it affect those who are sitting up there to be the advisor for this program to hear what the concerned citizen would like to see? I think what I'm most of the time hear when things are coming toward our city, we don't involve the people that pay the taxes, that keep this city in a daily operation. Yes, we have a governor body, yes, we have a mayor, yes, we have a city manager, but they don't per se run this city. They are electors. And you all have got to get back to listen to what the people, the concerned citizen would like. Everything you can't address, but I think 70% you can, inability to transition. I have seen many things come up there on Main Street. And within a year's time, it's gone, it's vanished. Then you up for demolition property that could be reconstructed by gutting it out and saving it. Now we're talking about bringing in some investor, do you have the future tenants? Are there applications out? Is it transparent for the city residents in Forest Park who looking for a place to live? Because everything come here to the city mostly, none of the resident in Forest Park are in these property. And what we would like to see more, I know it's a neutral playing field, but you can stipulate because you're the holder of this. What you would like for your inside constituent to have, then bringing in new flow? You know, you just got to think at the box. Yes, I am for it, but no, I'm not, because I don't know what those constitutions look like. I don't know what the plan going to be extending, on what part you're up there, would it be on the slab, would it just be there? Do you have your tenants in place, or would it become a sore eye to our community? And we really need to be more transparent about development for those who already paying taxes. Retail, grocery store, a friendly restaurant. Then to be a more housing that people are not living in. We can't even build something for our homeless ones that been displaced. But we are talking about building new development to bring in other. If you did your stack and look at the certificate, we are so close to the airport. If you build those houses, a complex over there, there could be much increased rent on those units because the proximity is closer to the airport and all the byways. So I hope you are really considerate. And each party came up here was very valued. Nobody, I don't think was out of, whatever, your opinion is your opinion. But my opinion is, what a tenant's at, what about the people that live here? And what is that stipulation this investor is looking for? I'll give my time back to you, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Alright, you want to come back, if you want to come back and just share, then we'll be closing.
Brought the job down, a few questions out there, see if I can address as many as possible. I think first was, I guess, kind of the 60 units. As we know, we are in an ever-changing economic lending environment. We'll just put it as simple as, I know everybody reads the news, so all the lending programs, everything has been changing day by day. So number one, this is an opportunity that right now is available. There are requirements to the monies that are available. And we typically have a requirement that we're about 70 to 75 homes when we build these types of communities. And but because we understood, you know, we knew that we were pushing the envelope with the request, which there was only one request, when the original request went in, it was for 75 units or 70 units plus. We backed that down to 60, so there was never a changing of asking for the minimum and going up. We've actually decreased and we've actually gone to the bare minimum that will allow us to get the funding that's needed to complete this development. So anything less unfortunately kills the opportunity that we have before us to move this forward. I know I've heard, you know, we are, of course, we, I guess, would technically be considered an investor, but we are the developer and long-term owner. Unlike most of the apartment communities that are around this area, most of the retail, most of those owners have changed hands. You know, just being candid, you know, we researched the current, I guess, kind of conditions of a lot of the apartment communities that were around, they weren't the best. And so I know that's something you don't want to see happen again, but part of how you keep that from deteriorating is you know there's long-term owners. Our financing requirements requires that we do that. We do land use restrictions, there's all these things that we put in place that shows that, you know, an affiliate of Presswick Land Holdings will be a long-term owner of this community. There would be shared parking, of course, there's, you know, we're across the street from other businesses. So the way we plan this, there's some additional parking right across from or adjacent to our building that allows for shared parking around the area. We typically, actually, in most of our communities, you know, we've been on two acres, and of course, it's different areas, we understand with density. Two acres, we've done as many as 200 units. But, you know, again, it's how do you handle the parking? But we have ample parking, you know, our current communities kind of showed that that's it. And part of why we want to be here, I heard the airport is proximity, that's why we believe in Forest Park. You have wonderful infrastructure, jobs in the area, but what you don't have is housing that we're proposing. And so that's why we want to be here, that's why we want to be a partner of the city of Forest Park. And I think the last thing is, there's an opportunity to, you know, have another opportunity to speak to some of the residents here that have some additional questions. We're open to that, and we can provide information of other communities that they can go and see. We're still, you know, communities that were developed by Presswick 15 years ago, still the owner, they all look great. And we'll share the list and go take a look, go visit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna close the public comments and. Alright, I need to open it up. For the board, did you want to say?
Yes, I just wanted to also provide some additional context. So based off of the LCI that was also mentioned by our mayor, the downtown core has different density requirements in different areas. So there's a low-density corridor, there's a medium-density corridor, and there's a high-density area of the ordinance. So the ordinance does state that any density for the traditional downtown core, low-density area which where these properties are listed for this proposed development, it does state that it is required for six to 12 units per acre. The applicant does have 1.6 plus or minus acres. And the only way to bypass them to be able to have that approval is through the conditional use process. So that is the purpose of us presenting this to you all today.
We have been here. Comments? Comments, yeah.
Yeah, I got comments. As a former chairman of development authority, housing was presented to the board and council about five, six years ago. We were gonna put in 28 condos on Main Street. That got shot down. Now you want to put 60 in an acre and a half? How is that flying on Main Street? On the place that you didn't want 28, but you're gonna put 60 and go straight up? We don't have a space, and then he talks about across the street adjacent parking, that's city property? I didn't want to buy that property for parking for that 60-unit apartment complex? On Main Street, 60 units, come on, that's way too much for Main Street. It will be congested, it will be a mess. And where they gonna park at? Where's the parking? In the back, in the front, or across the street on other city property? So personally, knowing the development and how, we had gotten approval and from the past, Economic Director Bruce Abraham, as well as the planner Shelby, and everybody respects Shelby. But it still got turned down because I guess you didn't like the developers, the city of, I say the mayor. Mayor didn't like the developers that we had, excuse me, I'm talking.
You don't want a dressed person, we can't, can't do that. Well, Mayor, we apologize, we can't address, we want to just stay with the, with the, don't get me in trouble. We apologize for that.
Okay, well, being like I said, I was the chair of that board for many, and a lot of things, they wanted me to do a lot of things so that they can have control and do what they want to do. 60 units is not conducive to that, to Main Street. Now, yeah, we need housing, we need, yeah, I agree, housing bring in retail. Well, we tried to bring in a top-notch retail and they shut it down, which was Zaxby's, right on Main Street, would have been perfect. So I'm saying, because I know the background of the Main Street development. And I don't agree, and I hope my council, I hope this board does not agree.
We'll do a motion for that.
So I just wanted to also make a comment. This applicant is also, we're hearing a variance that they're requesting today. And then the question about the parking will be addressed during that variance hearing. So I do know it is item number, sorry about that, let me just confirm. I guess it's item number two, it's the next item. So I can go over that when we get there, and then I can discuss with you all where the parking is and what was also requested at that time.
Okay.
I would like to also have a comment. Sir, what are the square footage of the units you planning to build? Will there be two bedrooms, one bedroom, what will be the square footage of the unit?
There'll be one-twos and threes, and they typically average probably about 900 square feet, 850 to 900, on average, some smaller, some a little bit larger.
That was the only question, I just have a comment now. Right now, I'm working with some companies who are doing the same thing in some other cities east point. I believe it's time for this city to stop sitting down, let's move toward moving and adding on some different types of revenues. Let's put people in this city who want to come here and don't mind flying over the airport saying, who, Forest Park is the city to go to. I'm also a teacher to teach disadvantaged youth who don't mind coming to places where they can do things and get away where they can go because they don't have anything else to do, such as coming in with disturbances, drug sales, robberies, things of that nature. As long as you keep the economics of this city so low, you're gonna get that kind of stuff coming in here. Need to raise it, let's put some people on that street, let's stop being a ghost town, okay? The complexes I'm dealing with right now, they're putting 160 units on a lot, almost the same size. They're going up nine floors, okay? There's a building downtown Atlanta called Herman J. Russell Powers. Land ain't that much, it's got nine floors. So why are we wasting time? Let's be. Land ain't that much, it's got nine floors. So why are we wasting time? Let's be.
All right, can I come in? All right, we ready for a motion?
I motion that it be approved with the variance for, I have a number CUP two zero two five dash zero two.
All favor.
Wait a minute.
We have a second, we have a second. Your second, okay. All in favor. All opposed. All right, so, uh, case CUP two O two five O two has passed in favor. All right, we're ready for the next.
Thank you. All right, our next case is VAR two zero two five dash zero six. Downtown Main Street District variance requests, City Council Ward Two. Variance request to increase the allowed density within the traditional downtown core from the required six to twelve units per acre to sixty units. Reduce the required parking from one point seven five stalls per unit to one point six stalls per unit. Reduce the required minimum bedroom size by a hundred and fifty square feet for each one, two, and three-bedroom type. Reduce the front yard setback to ten feet to accommodate on-street parking. Reduce the minimum floor-to-ceiling height on the first floor from eighteen feet to ten feet. And reduce the retail glazing to fifty percent of the length of the retail portion of the building to transparent glazing thirty to forty percent of the length of the building, uh, for the construction of new mixed-use development within the downtown Main Street District. The applicant's Presswood Land Holdings, um, and the address is zero seven five two seven six zero seven seven zero Main Street District. As previously stated, north is RT, which is two-family residential district and east, west, and south is Main Street District. Some background for this, uh, the applicant is seeking a series of variances to facilitate the development of the proposed new mixed-use project on a one point six two plus or minus acre parcel within the traditional downtown core of the downtown Main Street District. The proposed development includes a request. And I won't read through the request again, um, but regarding the, uh, parking setbacks and the height as well as the units. Um, according to the applicant's letter of intent, the requested variants are driven by the site's exceptional and extraordinary conditions, including the small size, um, irregular topography and challenges posed posed by current construction market. The properties limited in land area and sloping nature create significant obstacles to conventionally develop under the existing zoning requirements. Adhering to these standards would result in insufficient use of land, um, leaving substantial portions of the property under utilized. Per Section eight dash eight five four dot point seven, setbacks in orientation of buildings, mixed-use and commercial buildings shall have zero setbacks from back of the sidewalks. The applicant argues that the requested variants are essential to address these site constraints while ensuring development standards remain financially feasible with rising construction costs. With the rising construction cost supply chains and shortages of critical building materials, the development process is further complicated. The applicant believes that adjusting unit sizes and parking requirements will allow them to proceed without compromising the quality and viability. Given the current challenges faced on the, uh, development site, the applicant contends that the requested variances are necessary. And if granted, the approval of these variances will facilitate an efficient and sustainable development as well as maximizing the site's potential and contributing positively to the ongoing revitalization of the downtown area. I have provided you all also with the site map, I'm sorry, aerial map and zoning map of the property. You also have the survey, um, site photos and proposed structure as, uh, you did in the last report. So based off of the recommendation, well, the planning commission may grant a variance for the development standards of this chapter impertinence under this chapter if, after a public hearing, it makes the findings in fact that one, the approval will not be injurious to the public health, safety, and morals and general welfare of the community. Two, the use and value of the area adjacent to the property included in the variance will not be affected in substantially in a substantially adverse manner. And three, the strict application of the terms of the ordinance will result in a practical difficulty in use of property. So based off of, uh, our review, staff recommends approval of the variance with conditions. The conditions are as follow. One, staff recommends receiving final approval from mayor and council to obtain approval to develop the sixty units due to Section eight dash eight dash five four, um, dot eight A. Two, the ordinance stating that residential densities within the zoning district must range six to twelve units per acre. This section also advises that the residential densities exceeding twelve units per acre are subject to approval through conditional use permit. If granted, approve by mayor and council to proceed with the development of sixty units, variance on number of units shall be granted. Two, staff recommends approval of the front setback to ten feet to create on-street parking so as long as parking stalls are constructed as depicted in the provided site plan. Condition three, staff recommends denial of the reduction of the unit size by a hundred and fifty square feet per Section eight dash eight three seven downtown Main Street District standards. The minimum living area of a studio shall be six hundred square feet, one bedroom should be eight hundred square feet, two bedroom should be a thousand square feet, and three bedroom should be one thousand one hundred square feet. By maintaining the minimum living area, we are able to ensure we offer an adequate living space and comfortability for future residents for the city. Number four, staff recommends a height adjustment from floor to ceiling height on the first floor to be fourteen feet instead of the requested ten feet, which would be a four-feet reduction instead of the requested eight-feet reduction. And this is for the retail portion of the, um, proposed development. Number five, staff recommends maintaining glazing at fifty percent on the retail portion of the building to enhance visibility, attract foot traffic, and showcase products effectively. Additionally, larger windows support brand identity, provide visual connectivity and security, and help deter crime by offering clear sightline into space. The increased transparency ensures a safer environment by allowing employees to monitor both the interior and surrounding area. Furthermore, the glazing improves safety for drivers and pedestrians by offering better visibility of the store's activities, reducing blind spots and potential hazards near the building. Number six, staff recommends maintaining the parking requirements of one point seven five stalls per unit. If the applicant is approved for sixty units, no parking variance would be needed. As the proposed parking is adequate with the one point seven five stalls per unit, however, the applicant must obtain approval from the neighboring lot and provide staff with parking agreement from the lot owners west of the property. Confirming that the development is authorized to utilize their space for parking, this agreement shall be submitted to staff prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And number seven, if the mayor and council approve the development of sixty units, staff recommends that the applicant preserve the architectural design as presented in the rendered photo provided to staff. This concludes my report.
We have the applicant.
Andrew Harris, three seven one five Northside Parkway. All right, I'll be brief. I think everything was itemized. The only thing I would ask for would just be the kind of reconsideration on the unit square footages. As we know, that it, um, it's not market. If you look at what's being built today, those units are rather large, especially with construction price. I know typically you can't cite pricing, but unfortunately, that's a reality and it's kind of creating housing burden, burden for individuals. As we know, what you pay for, someone else has to pay for. So when they get overly large, you have to charge more in rent. And one thing we're trying to do is make sure that these are, you know, more of a workforce wage of what we charge, you know, what we rent on these, uh, units. So I was saying, I reserve that for my, rest of my time for any other questions. Thank you.
Use an address.
As we are working to increase the housing stock in the city of Forest Park and through my analysis, the housing size, uh, is a question. A lot of our homes in the city of Forest Park are smaller than, um, the typical home size in other jurisdictions. And we just want to ensure that any resident that is a future resident of the city of Forest Park has an adequate living space.
I guess the question is, can you, can you guys work with that?
It will increase the footprint. That's part of the challenge is we look to make the footprint sma- smaller as you increase those unit sizes. But again, I kind of say always go back to go and look at what we have. I mean, you can go, we've, we've got, I don't know, four thousand units between Metro Atlanta and a little piece of South Carolina, and none of our units are that large except for what was built in the early two thousands. Because unfortunately, with all the things we talked about before with unfortunately tariffs, other costs, things have gotten a little bit smaller, but you do have to make sure there are other guidelines that make sure that they are livable because one, you know, funding guidelines, et cetera. Make sure that we don't build anything that you can't put furniture, because if we did that, we couldn't lease them. So there's the, the market dynamics that we're also facing as well.
Will it be affordable housing?
Yes, ma'am, it will be affordable.
And just keep in mind, this is just a staff recommendation, so the board is able to make the decision based upon your C-FI. We're just providing you our recommendation based upon our findings.
Thank you. Do we have anybody want to speak? All right, so we'll close the public comments. All right, so we open for motion.
I motion that the, uh, variance for VAR two zero two five dash O six be approved.
With conditions. With the condition.
All right, so it's been motion and second. All who agree.
Because I agree, I disagree with the whole thing.
So it's been favor. So we're able to move on.
Thank you. Our next case is PP dash two zero two five dash zero one. Current zoning, single-family residential district. Proposed request approval of the preliminary plat for seven thirty South Avenue fifty fifty Park Ave to subdivide a point six four eight plus or minus acre parcel to create seven lots to construct six family, uh, sorry, six single-family detached homes within the single-family residential district. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat with conditions. The owner of record is Freeman Junior Billy Technique Concrete Construction. Nine four four Astor Avenue, Forest Park. The applicant Sandy Epstein, as well as Billy Freeman Technique, Technique Concrete Construction. Parcel numbers is one three zero five zero C G zero zero one, one three zero five zero C G zero two one. Future land uses low-density residential. The applicant is requesting approval of the preliminary plat for seven thirty South Avenue fifty fifty Park Ave to subdivide the two parcels of land equally. To create six detached single-family homes. The intent of the development is to provide additional housing options within the neighboring, the neighborhood by constructing six new single-family homes. The development aims to better utilize the subject property to increase density and alignment with the current development trends. Lot one is an existing single-family home that will remain on the proposed, on the property once subdivided. The subject property, further facts of finding, the adjacent land uses are north of the subject property consistent institutional, commercial, and east, west, and south are all single-family residential district. As stated, the proposed development is six single-family detached homes. Each home is proposed to be two-story construction with a square footage approximately one thousand five hundred square feet. And each unit will include a single-car garage. Regarding the consistency of the planning goals, the proposed development aligns with the goals of increased housing density within the area while maintaining compatibility with the surrounding residential and commercial uses. The development will contribute to additional living units in the neighborhood and enhance the overall housing stock. Comprehensive plan consideration. The proposed preliminary plat is consistent with the objects of the city's comprehensive plan and future land use, which supports residential development and appropriate land use densities within the area's own single-family residential. Conformance to the zoning requirements. The proposed district complies with the zoning requirements for the city of Forest Park as well as the, as well as with the previous variances that were granted by the planning commission. Impact on the surrounding area. The proposed development of the six single-family homes will be thoroughly, uh, designed and comple- complement the character of the surrounding neighborhood while incorporating a modern aesthetic, which with architectural elements reviewed and approved by the Urban Design Review Board. Development is expected to have minimal impact on the surrounding area in terms of traffic, infrastructure, and overall neighborhood character. Public infrastructure and services. The subject property benefits from access to existing public infrastructure, including roads, utilities, and central services required to support the proposed development. Additionally, the applicant has committed to installing public sidewalks that will extend from the development starting point at the corner of South Avenue and Cherry Street to its terminus at the corner of Cherry Street and Park Avenue, ultimately leading to Star Park. Also have provided you all with the aerial map and zoning for your review. And also the current site conditions of the proposed development. The site plan has also been provided, and the site plat has been provided for your review as well. Staff recommendations, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for seven thirty South Avenue fifty fifty Park Ave with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant will submit protective covenants to regulate land use in the subdivision and otherwise protect proposed subdivision. Number two, the developer will be responsible for all costs associated with the design and construction of sanitary suitor, sewer and water improvements necessary to serve the proposed plat. And three, sidewalks will be installed from the development starting point at the corner of South Avenue and Cherry Street to its terminus at the corner of Cherry Street and Park Avenue, which will serve each lot and shall be designed and constructed in accordance with the city's standards. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Uh, do we have the applicant here? Let's make a statement. Yes, sir. State your name and address.
All right, Billy Freeman Junior, uh, seven fifty-one Bridge Avenue. Okay, this, uh, this development here been coming for a while for me. I actually, on Cherry Street itself where the development is, there's only one house that's owned by Erica who lives over on the side of me. It runs down the side of one of my, or the house that I reside in. And I also own the house on the other side of the street. This is, this project here is going to be more of a, it's something that's ve- really needed in Forest Park, but it's kind of a vanity project too. This, this right here could be the one street because I own a lot of properties in Forest Park. It's always a nice house next to a not-so-nice house, and that's how Forest Park is kind of spotted like that. This could be, this street here could be what Forest Park could be. This is the one street that the house is not going to be overly big or overly expensive. They're going to be more in the three hundred fifty thousand dollar range, three bedrooms, two and a half bath, deck on the top to barbecue or whatever, and a one-car garage. I was, I, I want to put the sidewalks down the street to just make this thing, this is a gateway into Star Park. The big walkway on top is, is a walk, to make it more of a walking neighborhood. We don't have a lot of, uh, on not my particular street, we don't have sidewalks. But to make it a walking neighborhood, that'd be one, one of the things that I want to, uh, make sure I implement. But the design of these houses is just nice. Not as large as some of the ones been put over there across the street from the park, but it's more accessible for the regu- for the regular guy. And plus it's on, I live in Forest Park now. I'm kind of, I'm going to be expanding my house. I'm stuck, I'm here now. My business is here, my residence is here, my sisters and everything is here. With bi- with business in Forest Park has been difficult. As, as the president of the, not the president, but the chair of the Development Authority, I know how hard it is to get businesses to come here. I was part of that Presswood deal. You can't get all of that stuff until you get the people. And that's the one thing that I, that I've been fighting this fight here for ten years now. That Main Street has been dead for ten years. I can't do nothing about Main Street, but I can do something about the street that I'm living on. I own everything on that street, basically. And I'm not going, y'all, y'all, people around Forest Park know how I build. They know what I build. This thing here is going to be what Forest Park could be. It's going to be affordable for a lot of people. I'll work, I'm going to be trying to work with the mayor for, with some things for police and fire, try to make things where some other people can get into these, uh, buildings first. But it's going to be a really nice development and I just, I'm thrilled about it. I'm building it out of my own pocket because building in Forest Park is, is, is different. Banks don't really want to get behind you building an area that's, that's proven not to be really economically viable. I think this could be a game changer and I'm willing to put my own money up to prove it.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Do we have anybody? Okay, we have a question from the board member.
You got a little more than a half acre, right? And you want to put six houses on a half acre of land with a garage, then they're gonna be spitting in each other window, that close together?
No, the, the house is gonna be fourteen for the park.
Fourteen feet apart, six homes on a half acre.
Yes, ma'am.
And just to provide some background, this project has been, uh, presented to the city since, I want to say the end of November of two thousand twenty-three. So the planning commission voted to approve the variances that the applicant did provide. The applicant also was, have received approval from the Urban Design Review Board on their architectural design of this property. It's just some of the projects take a little longer to come to an end. So the applicant has complied with all the requests from the Planning and Community Development Department, has submitted adequate applications to receive their variances to be approved. Yes, the lot is small, but the variances that were submitted, um, were approved by the board.
All right, we do have, um, public comment. State your name and the end address.
City Council of the Lord God, the Lord's God Ward Two. Mr. Freeman, you, are you gonna make the, the, the bu- the house that is one house over from me, you're going up like that? You, I'm the last house across from the senior center. You built the house and you took it straight up. You added a second level. Original, but I, what, my question is, are you going to give it that type of look? Two story house? What's the square footage, Mr. Freeman? You gonna do it fifteen hundred, three bedrooms, two, three two? To an hour? Now, I can honestly say that Mr. Freeman, he start on time and end on time. I can honestly say that Mr. Freeman gives us a, a very beautiful aesthetic look in the community. I, 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 I ain't gonna lie to you now, I didn't want it. I'm, I'm gonna be truthful with you. Now, man, you can talk. We'll talk when we leave out of here, okay? Well, my thing is, are you gonna, you gonna start on time? You putting your own money in this? You gonna follow all the codes and orders? You ain't looking for no favors or nothing like that.
Already got him.
Now, you, you, and, and, and so it was, it was something you said, me and the mayor. What about me and you, the mayor, eh, city council? Now, I ain't gonna lie to do, he give a good look now. He do. Uh, so the buffer, what you, the buffer between, um, the both properties, it's gonna be how many? What, what is the space? Twelve fourteen feet between both houses, garage and the deck on top. Oh, shucky ducky, quack, quack. All right, okay, I just wanted to know.
So, so you was in agreement with the, you was in agreement of the building of the house? It's gone.
Picture real quick. He ain't put no pictures up in here. Visual, individual. I haven't seen this before. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank you again.
Okay, you like it, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna be on them like white rice for real.
All right, all right, Mr.
Like water on a duck.
Thank you. Thank you for the, the public comment, all right?
And just to kind of, uh, give some context of the background, this was heard by the planning commission on September twenty first, twenty twenty-three. And the variance that he res- received was to, um, he decreased his minimum lot width from the required eighty feet to seventy feet. That was approved by the board. Um, he reduced the front yard setback because of where the lot lines are as well as the rear yard setback. And that was from thirty feet to twelve as well as twenty-five to five. Um, so he can input and build in the sidewalks.
Yeah, we remember that, so, all right. Do we have anybody else against? I would, any more, any more comments?
Yes, I do have a comment. I would like to say, first of all, thank you, sir, for what you're doing up there. That was, I saw up on that corner. He got that corner looking real pretty. And ain't even that near. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, I had a semi protein come and play, uh, a game at the park. And, uh, I walked with the coach over there and was telling him about what you were gonna do. He was excited. Let me tell you what they weren't excited about during the game. I'm gonna tell y'all, because I called him. I actually, I don't know who, I didn't speak to nobody. I left a message. Here's a semi protein playing in our city. The coach is a friend of mine. I don't even like sports and I show up at the game. Uh, lights went on at the stadium. They more excited about what you have, sir, than at the stadium because somebody didn't turn the lights on. And they almost canceled the game. That, that's what I would have a problem with. So let's be, this beautiful city, it'll even be better once stuff like that takes place. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this time we're gonna go ahead and have a motion. All right, so motion to approve or disapprove, so.
Motion to approve P P dash two zero two five dash zero one.
All right, it's been motion to approve. Uh, this time we have a second.
A second.
All right, so it's been motion and second. All who agrees? All right, amen. It's been approved, so we're moving right along. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next case is V A R two zero two five dash zero four. Multiple family residential district, Ward Two, proposed request, variance request, uh, to decrease the side yard setback from the required thirty-five feet to ten feet, and reduce the rear yard setback from the required thirty-five feet to thirty feet to allow the construction of a new two family duplex within the multiple family residential district. Um, just some summary and background, uh, in tw- earlier in twenty twenty-four, the applicant was approved, uh, by mayor and council to rezon this parcel from single family residential district to multi, multi-family residential district to construct this duplex. Um, the conditions of that rezoning approval was the applicant was to come back to the board and apply for the variances, um, that we set forth today. Um, so the applicant is requesting the approval of the variance to reduce the side yard setback from twenty-five feet to ten and re- decrease the rear yard setback from thirty-five to thirty. The applicant's intent is to construct a, um, duplex comprised of a two residential units with three bedrooms, two and a half bath, and a parking path for two vehicles per unit on the subject property. Um, although the lot size meets the minimum requirements for the duplex, the proposed duplex will occupy two thousand five hundred and, uh, thirty-two square feet of the land, which is a significant portion of the available space. Due to required setbacks, parking space, and other zoning regulations, the current lot dimensions limit the applicant's ability to build the duplex without compa- compromising the size and functionality of the individual lot. Um, the applicant has expressed the goal of this project is to create a home for their family and contribute to the community-focused living environment within Forest Park. Um, the applicant agrees that granting this variance would enable efficient, effective use of the property while preserving the family-oriented atmosphere in the surrounding area. Um, so approval of this variance will allow the applicant to move forward with construction, um, without sacrificing the quality of living spaces and overall design of the units. Um, I have provided you all an area map of the site in question as well as zoning. And there also is a survey attached and the site plan. Um, the applicant has provided staff with, uh, the proposed development, um, design options, uh, there, and then we have the site photos. Um, and I know one of these, so staff does recommend approval with conditions. One of the, um, conditions I would like to add, which came from the Urban Design Review Board, but, um, it is not placed in this application, but I did speak to the applicant about it, um, previously. Um, so basically, staff recommends approval of the requested variance to allow the twenty-five feet to ten feet, um, on the side, and then the thirty-five feet to thirty feet in the rear to construct the duplex. So condition one is staff recommends the applicant add a rear entry door to the property of each unit for safety reasons. In addition to this, um, in the addition of the rear entry doors essential to ensure proper access and egress, enhancing the overall safety of the building. The rear entry should be designed and installed in compliance with local safety codes and regulations of proof of installation will be required, uh, prior to final approval, and please ensure all that, all necessary adjustments are made, um, promptly to meet these safety requirements. And also, the second condition is staff recommends the applicant provide us an additional materials and color schemes for this project, um, to input mixed materials to provide a better aesthetically, uh, pleasing, um, design as far as the exterior so that the duplex is more aesthetically sound. And it looks, looks a lot, it looks better. So, uh, we do recommend using mixed materials, um, in accordance with some of the materials you already listed.
Thank you. Do we have a comment from the? Say your name and address, please.
My name is Gateson Gashlin. My address is thirty-six, three six four Avenger Drive. Um, the goal for this property is to really just house my family and also want to comply with the community here in Forest Park. I love this city. I love the community here, and being in roadside assistance, I'm all for the people. I'm all about helping the people. And being able to come out here, that's the goal, and that's what we're going for.
Uh, so question, you, are you able to, uh, meet those conditions that we shared?
Yes, I am. Um, I do have the updated, um, designs that I will be sharing with her, so she grab that.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody that, uh, disapprove or? Okay, any questions?
This is the, this is the duplex.
This, this is your time, um. Ms. Carolyn, you can state your name again, Ms. Carolyn.
Carolyn Matt Millen, uh, ten twenty Ferguson Court, Forest Park, Georgia. I, um, wanted to know, uh, when I will receive this information, uh, whether or not it has been approved for, uh, 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 duplex to be put in the area next to where I live.
So to answer your question, uh, as stated previously, the applicant did receive approval from mayor and council to rezon that parcel. Uh, the property to the west of the parcel is an apartment complex, and then the property to the east of the parcel is a single family home. So based off of the, what was presented to mayor and council, uh, that property would be able to be rezoned to family due to it being, um, a, I would say a transitional home between single family and apartment. So that it was approved to rezon the property to, um, multi-family, to allow the construction of the duplex. Um, also, the duplex is what was presented in order to, uh, assist with being able to make the recommendation for the rezoning of that parcel. So that did occur in twenty twenty-four.
All right, did that answer for you, Ms. Carol?
Did, did you have any additional questions? Um, so we send out a public notice, uh, fifteen calendar days prior to any public hearing. Um, as well as property notices to surrounding property owners are sent out, as well as we place signs in the yard, um, of each property where we've had a hearing. So, um, in twenty twenty-four, there was a sign placed on that property. Um, I do have photos from a previous staff report, if you would like. I could share those with you. As well as there was public notices, uh, sent. It also was posted in the paper, and it was also, um, had additional notice for a mayor and council meeting. Do you have any further questions? Thank you.
All right, did, you okay with that? We got, uh, some little personal, can we take a five minute, four minute? All right, we'll be right back. Thank you. All right. Be right there.
He was on the news just last week or this week. They talking about a project.
I was glad, I was gonna slip on it myself. Glad you said it. You can call it back to order.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call it back to order, and so that we can continue. Uh, Ms. Carolyn, did you get your, uh, answer? Yes, ma'am, okay.
Oh, and I just want to answer her question. She asked me when is construction starting? So there's a series of application processes that the applicant still will have to go under. He also will have to receive approval from the Urban Design Review Board to even move forward with getting the initial, be able to submit an application to even start building. So the Urban Design Review Board will have to approve his design. If they don't like his design, then they will likely deny it, and then he will have to resubmit until he provides something that the board likes. Okay, but that was it. That was it. I had no further, um, comments. Okay, but that was it. That was it. I had no further um comments.
Okay, thank you.
And this was also on Ward two.
All right. And any comments uh from the board? All right. But this time we read for motion. Read for a motion.
Our motion that we move forward with uh the variance. Um with the conditions of safety, with the doors for the back of the house as requested and the other things she requested. Thank you, sir. I think it'll be a great uh, you know, it'll be great for the community.
Man, it's been motion second.
Second.
All right. So it's been motion second, all the greens. Those who follow. Hey man, so it's been passed. Thank you. All right, we're ready to go to the next.
Okay, so the next case is V A R two zero two five dash zero five. Single family residential district, council Ward four. Variance request to decrease the lot width from the required eighty feet to sixty feet to construct a new single family home within a single family residential district. Um staff recommends approval of variance. The subject property at five five six K Street is located within a single family residential district on a zero point two zero three plus or eight or minus lot. Um per section eight dash eight two nine, single family residential district, the minimum required lot width for properties in the R S district is eighty feet. However, the subject lot is only sixty feet wide, which does not meet this requirement. Um as the lots dimensions are fixed, the applicant is unable to expand or alter the boundaries, creating a hardship. The eighty foot minimum lot width required limits the applicant's um ability to develop the property for its intended purpose. Preventing the construction of the single family home without a variance. Um the applicant contends that granting the variance is essential for the reasonable use of the development of the property, helping to preserve. Um its value and utility while respecting the surrounding neighborhood and the overall intent of zoning code. Um additionally, the applicant ensures that the requested variance will not result in adverse effects such as increased traffic, safety issues, or negative impacts on neighboring properties. Approval of this variance will allow the applicant to move forward with the property's development. While the proposed development is more modern. Than the surrounding properties, it will enhance the area's value and character while remaining consistent in the intent of our zoning ordinance. This approval will enable the applicant to use the property intended um for, as it's intended, increasing the value. Um and contribute positivity to the community without causing undue hardship or negative impacts. Um I have provided the board with an aerial map of the proposed location as well as a zoning map. Uh we have attached the site survey, which shows the current state of the property. There is an existing house on the property currently. And then the pro- um the site plan shows the proposed addition. Um there also is a photo of the proposed structure intended to be built on the property. And based off this recommendation, staff recommends approval of the variance to decrease the lot width. From the required eighty feet to sixty feet to construct a new single family home.
You coming from the applicant?
I don't see the applicant present.
Okay. Anybody want to oppose?
Um again, my name is Tiffany McDay and I'm sorry, I didn't, uh my five eighty K Street is where I stay. Uh I understand that you said that they're going to go up. The survey, it looks like the survey says that they're gonna, when they demolition this house, when they tear this, tear this house down. I mean, are they gonna allow us to let us know when they're gonna tear it down so we'll know when to move our cars and and get our, you know, things together on the street? And also, I see that that in this, in the um survey. They pushing the house back in the middle of the property. Um that's where they, that's how they're gonna decrease it like that, uh pushing it back? Cause if you look at where the house is right now, that's not, that's not where they're gonna be right there. Is that correct or am I just looking at it incorrect? Okay.
So to answer your question, a site survey depicts the current state of the current property. So it, a survey depicts what the current um boundaries are of the lot. It depicts what the current, uh if there is a structure, where the current location of the structure is, any easements, any topography. A site survey gives you a overview of what the current state of the site is. So the site plan will show the new proposed home in its location. Um with a review of the information provided by the applicant, the lot itself is only sixty feet. So the applicant is unable to meet that eighty foot requirement because the lot itself is not eighty feet, it's only sixty feet. But with the proposed construction of the new home. There, they do meet the district standards, which we do require a ten foot setback on each side of the home on the west and east property of the side. We require a thirty foot setback in the rear and a twenty five foot on the front. Based off the location, even though the lot is smaller, the applicant still meets the district standards as far as where the location of the house is. As well as the setbacks of the property. So it wouldn't impede onto anyone else's property or cause any issues for that matter.
The other part I wanted to ask about, I think that's you, that's yours, I'm sorry. The other part I wanted to ask about is when they get ready to do the demolition. Will they let us know all of that? When they get ready to tear that old house down that's sitting there?
Um so the applicant will have to go through a series of permits to get to the demolition and a series of approvals. Um that could be a request that they notify the neighboring um neighbors of the demolition, but. We wouldn't allow them to do any demolition without them seeking first uh receiving approval and receiving demolition permits to do so.
Did you name an address?
Okay, uh my name is Walter Gooden. I sit at five forty three K Street directly across from the proposed. Demolition and one single family home.
Yes, sir.
It's intended to be built. My concern, you know, when they start to. To process construction, demolition, construction of the, of the um single family home. Will it impede in the neighborhood for the traffic flow up and down Case Creek? And also a safety hazard when that construction begin. You know, that's my concern. The traffic blocking the neighborhood. People in and out, uh people coming in and out of the driveway with the blocked driveways of uh. Of the uh residents, especially mine. I'll be on that directly uh. I'm directly across from, from the house. That's my concern. You know, uh do, if it do block the flow of traffic. Um what do I have to do? Call a code inspector? You know, when the, if it take place. That's my concern.
Okay. But do we have any information on that? Uh, she's gonna speak on that.
So to your question, uh no applicant has the right to block any right of ways or any streets. Um without any proper approvals. I don't foresee them blocking anyone's driveway. Um that is something that we would not permit or even allow. Um also, if there has to be any road closures, there will be specific um. Things set in place if there would need be and also when they do demolish prop- uh. When structures are demolished, there are certain things set in place to uh prevent any. Um harm to those in the surrounding areas. So I hope that answers your question. Um if you notice any road blockage, um no one has the right to block any public right of ways. Uh so typically, it could be public works and we do have the public works director here that can speak to that nature.
Good evening. All constructions should always allow ingress and egress for private properties during construction. In the event that an incident does happen, there always usually is a point of contact for the developer, the contractor. That the city has contact with that they can go ahead and make a call for you. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Since the owners of the property is not here, will you still approve this? Because they're not. They didn't even come and show up to even talk about their property. So would there still be an approval for this?
So at any point, the, these petitions are received in the office. We do advise the applicants. That it is in their best interest to be present in the event that the board has questions. This petition was advertised appropriately um and. As we're presenting it to the board, the board still has the liberty to approve or deny whether the applicant is present or not. Our ju- our duty as in the planning committee development department, once that decision is made by the board, we are to notify the applicant of which decision was made. Even if they were not present. So we do still have to comply, yes, and it will stand. So if there's a new applicant and things transition, approvals don't stay with the property, they're with the applicant. You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. So at this time, we're gonna have a motion. All right.
I just wanted to tell Mister, Mister Goodman, I, I know your street. I know how short it is and and narrow. It's, it's bound to be some kind of problem when the construction start because the street is so small. So I, yeah, yes, sir, I understand that. So just reported to code enforcement when, when you have a problem.
Make a comment. With demo with that house, a roll off will be on the property, not on the, the right of way. The roll off would be on the property, the tractor would be on the property. So I don't foresee. Uh congestion with, with, with right of ways on that street because all of the demo is gonna be on the property, not on the street. Then you can't leave the, the roll off on, on the right of way. It has to be on the property. So I, I don't foresee any problems. It should. Yeah.
Uh then we gave it, you got that answer?
So yes, if you do run into any problems, um as stated by Director Matthews, you can contact someone from the public works department. Um and we'll be able to assist you. But as stated uh by uh Mister Williams, there should not be any issues. That concludes my.
Okay, any more comments?
I just have one. For this particular variance, looking at the age of that home that's there. Is there any way to get the owner to submit a uh plan for demolition? As how he's gonna do it. I know a dumpster is good, but you got an old house sitting there. There's things you have to consider like asbestos and.
So those are requirements of the demolition. They do have to submit asbestos. They do have to submit those things. They can't just say, hey, I wanna. Demolish this home and don't. We do require them to submit demolition plans to demolish properties here. So. All of those things that you named would be addressed in order to even demolish the property.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
All right, motion.
Motion to approve variance two zero two five dash zero five.
That's been motioned. We have a second.
A second.
All right, so it's been motioned and second to approve. So be it. Now who agree? Yeah.
Aye.
All right. So be it. All right, we move right along to case.
All right, well, good evening. This is the end, hopefully, last one. Uh this is case text amendment twenty twenty five zero 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 one. Mini storage and self-storage facility amendment. Uh a number of discussions had been had at the mayor and council meetings with regards to concerns about the construction of. Mini warehouse and storage facilities. As a result of that, staff has made some modifications to the text to amend it. To allow a little more direction clarity as it relates to how to build and where to put. Mini storage and storage facilities. The requirements are really based on the scale and mass of the building as it relates to it being constructed. The idea is to not have extremely massive large structures adjacent to single level structures. So with this recommendation, as you can see on. Item number seven, page fifty two, there is a drawing that basically shows you what step setbacks are for the structure. What that does is it allows the structures to be built at one level and then the next level moves back and then the next level moves back. And what that does is it, it allows the property to not overshadow the sidewalk. And overshadow the front properties as well as adjacent properties. In addition, we provide some definitions for storage and mini storage and we provided some. Development standards such as sizing of the lot, um percentage coverage of the space and some prohibited uses. So with that, staff recommends approval of these particular changes and I'm here if you have any additional questions.
Do we have any additional questions? All right, board.
Your motion? Motion for the approval of, sorry. T A, yeah, T A two zero two five dash zero 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 one.
Okay, motion. We have second.
Second.
All who agree? All right.
Thank you.
All right. Well, praise God, we have finished. All right. So at this time, we have motion to.
Our motion that we adjourn.
All right. All right, one, thank everybody and want to say good night to you.